I'd like to welcome everybody out if you can please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a pretty good agenda before us today, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start with approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have one set of minutes for the February 7th, 2018 minute meeting.
I didn't have any changes. I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number two, review and possible awarding of a ULV truck mounted mosquito fogger bid. Do you want to come up and talk to that?
Okay, so we had only two vendors bid on this. One was Target and one was Adapco. The Target's cost was fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and the Adapco was thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. So I would suggest that we would go with Adapco.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
None.
Since we already opened those, we go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept that bid then and move forward with the purchase.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Chris.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for this. Thanks. Review and possible awarding of a 2018 snowplow bid, Daniel Campbell. Commissioners, this is a similar thing item where we open the bids in the past, in the previous commission meeting and ask them to bring those back for review and award. Daniel?
So we got three bids, one from Kenworth, one from Mack Mountain West Truck Center, and the other one from Legacy and Freightliner. So Kenworth's bid was one ninety-five, eight thirty-seven, oh nine. Mountain West Truck Center for the Mack was two oh one, one ninety-eight even. And Legacy with the Freightliner was two oh nine, zero fifteen dollars, or fifteen dollars. I suggest we would go with the Kenworth, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight thirty-seven. It's the best truck out there and cheapest too, so.
It's nice when they fall in line that way.
Yeah, I was sweating bullets, so. And they also offered the biggest bid too, so, which was a bonus.
Commissioners, if you don't have any questions, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move that we take Daniel's recommendation and approve and award the bid to Kenworth for the hundred and ninety-five thousand, some odd change.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Item number four, review and possible ratification of a contract for public defender services. Commissioners, as you're aware, we approved the public defender services with the three attorney attorneys. But we have yet to formalize the contract. I'm not sure if that's completed yet. Christian, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The contract, I've been talking to the attorney group today, right up until the time of the meeting here. So the latest draft you have should be the draft that they've accepted. And basically, the changes they've made have just been minor changes spelling out who's going to do what and a minor adjustment to how those funds were going to be allocated between them, which doesn't change the total amount that we agreed to. They did accept the counteroffer that we made to them, or well, they made a counteroffer to us after we made a counteroffer to them and settled on a price. And so that has been agreed upon. And the rest of the contract just outlines what services they're going to provide. So they are in agreement with the substance of it. I think there's, there may be, I'm just waiting to see. There's a question as to which of them would handle, for example, parental defense appeals. To what extent the second place conflict person will handle parental defense appeals. But I think, I think we've resolved everything and there's not much more to add. I've looked it over with County Attorney's Office. They don't have any objections to it. So I think we're good to approve it if you're okay with it.
Christian, I had just a couple of questions. The first being, as we talked about, that grant that is available for the purpose of helping to fund this, are, have they agreed to that portion of it?
Who's who agreed to what?
Have the three attorney firms agreed that they'll participate, do the reporting side?
Yes. And in fact, the.
Item number six speaks to that. The grant funding and compliance with requirements to grant granting entities?
Right. And so they've, they've agreed that they will, part of the grant requires that they would agree to performance monitoring, case reporting, case load monitoring. And so our agreement has incorporated the terms of the grant requirements into it and they've indicated they will comply with those provisions, so that they can, so that we can qualify for the grant.
And where I was going with that is with the agreement there, who's applying, who's making that application for that grant?
You are.
Okay, so that'll come from the county, not from them?
Correct. We make that application. I have started that work. SEALG has started that process. We've been providing them information so that they can do that. Gary, Jerry Gamber's been working on that and just about has that all done. And so we should be getting that out the door this week. In fact, I talked to Jerry today and she's almost got it all prepared. So she's gonna do, she's preparing it. She will provide it to me and then we will have to review that, make sure it looks okay. You'll have to look at it, make sure it's okay, and I believe you'll need to be the ones to submit the grant application.
And it'll need to probably come back through the commission agenda, so why don't we put it on for our next agenda item as a placeholder to follow up on the grant for that?
Great. I agree with that.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion?
I would just point out that I also forwarded the contract, the draft contract, to the granting entity and asked them to look at it to see if they see any problems or concerns with it. I haven't heard back from them yet. But I'm, in speaking with them, they weren't as worried about, they weren't too worried about the form of our contract, so I think they'll be fine with it.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we ratify or approve the ratification of the contract for public defender services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number five, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution 2018-1 calling for the temporary adjustment from the Governor's Office of Economic Development on rural fast track grants wage requirement. You know what? Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm not sure who put this on the agenda or who has the information on this.
We had asked it to be brought back because in the letter from the state, from the, from GOED, they had asked for a letter requesting that continued reduction on that, on the salaries or the wage level, but also it had to have a resolution that could be approved with it to go in. And so the purpose of bringing it back was not only to review the changes in the letter, but to also have a resolution to move it forward.
And Rita's done an excellent job at wording that, wordsmithing that and putting that letter together, so. I'm happy with it. If you Commissioners are, I'd go ahead and make a motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Is that to approve the letter and the resolution, Commissioner?
To approve both the letter and the resolution, 2018-01, right?
I'll go ahead and second that then.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number six, review and possible consideration of a lease agreement for new 7th District Courthouse building between Carbon County and Administrative Office of the Courts.
Commissioners, we, we got a response to the, back to the changes that I suggested for the lease agreement. Some of those changes were agreed to, some of them were not. I'll just highlight a couple of the ones that I, that they've agreed to and some that I have a couple of concerns about. We had indicated in there that after the initial lease term of three hundred and one months, that after that point, there would be an increase of point five percent per year, each year thereafter. And the way the contract is written, the state has said after, after we've paid it off, as you know, the initial lease term is set to run in conjunction with the payment of the building itself. So once the building's paid off in full, that's the month at which the lease agreement will end. They've also put in there that there will be two additional sixty-month terms of the lease automatically. So they would, and they had, their initial draft said that they would, during those two, two five-year terms of the lease, resulting in a, basically an additional ten-year term. During those additional ten years, we would rent it to them for the same price that we finished the, for the same price that the, the lease ended at the, at the end of the last term. They are not willing to entertain an increase in the lease during those ten years, indicating that the building is a, they emphasize that the building's not a commercial building, that it's a public building for all the citizens and that the point of the lease was to pay the, it was to be a pass-through, a cost pass-through basically, so that there was no harm to the county and the construction and payment of the building, which is all true. It's not a commercial building. It is a public building meant for the citizens and the operation of the courts. So they're not willing to pay any additional amount for ten years after the lease term. We had asked that if they continue to, to hold over, that at that point, there would be an automatic increase after that additional ten-year lease period. They're not willing to agree to that either. I'm not too concerned about that because it does say that we can give them a one hundred and twenty-day notice that the lease is ending or that we'd like to renegotiate. And so at that point, after that additional ten-year term, we can renegotiate a new term with them. But you need to be aware that that's, that's where they're coming from is they are not willing to entertain any kind of increase for those ten years after the initial lease term. So, and their philosophy behind that is they wanted to pay this up and not have any more cost for a period of time after that. And their position is, basically, they held the county harmless. They kept the county from having to expend anything to have this building. So we ought to, in turn, give them a period of time where there's no rent increases.
And that was based on the last month?
Well, if I look at the schedule, I think for the last several months, that lease agreement, or for the last several years, the payment amount does not change, right Seth?
No.
Okay, I, so it's, it's for the last several years, you're not going to have a different, you're going to have the same amount that they're paying every month.
For some reason, it stuck in my head that that last payment was going to be a smaller payment and I didn't want to agree to a significant decrease.
I can double, I don't have that schedule in front of me, but I'll double check that and make sure. I think the intent though was that they'd be paying the same amount that they had paid for the.
They would continue paying.
Prior years before, yeah. Another, the, one of the things I had a concern with was that, as written, the lease agreement says that we will, section 2.8.1 says, "We agree to develop a construction schedule which shall provide tenant occupancy as mutually agreed to by the parties. We will devote time in consultation with landlords, architects, and engineers to prepare and finalize architectural and engineering plans." I guess my concern is that we have already done that. I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned that they're saying that we're going to do all these things when we've agreed to do them. Section 2.8.4 says, "Tenants shall provide at its sole expense," or landlord shall provide, 2.8.4 says landlord shall provide at its sole expense and be responsible for all costs associated with the construction of the tenant improvements. Landlord shall provide telecommunications services to the building. I guess my concern is that I would like the state to recognize and acknowledge that the building has in fact been designed and constructed with their requested tenant improvements in mind. In other words, this, this makes it sound like if they get in there and they don't like, and they don't like something, they're going to say, well, you know, it was not designed, you've breached the lease agreement because you didn't construct it. You didn't include our tenant improvements. I think there should be a reference to the tenant improvements having already been approved and that we forwarded those to DCFM and that, and I want them to recognize and acknowledge that we have made their tenant improvements and provided for those in our contract with DFCM. That was the point of my revision to section 2.8.1. They rejected that. They said DFCM is not a party to the lease and the courts are not a party, and the courts, meaning the AOC, is not a party to the MOU that the county has with D, DCFM. So we don't want to include the terms of your agreement with DFCM in the lease. I guess I'm just a little concerned that, that they're trying to create a back alley for us to, to come against us if they don't like something in that building. I, I think it ought to indicate that we have built this building hand in hand, step by step, with AOC. They've come down every week and looked it over and now they're saying, well, we don't want to acknowledge that. We're not going to make such an acknowledgement. That's a separate contract between you and them. We didn't, you contracted with them, we didn't. The fact is though, they, they have guided us through this process and I think there ought to be some recognition on their part that they've done that.
And the, the one thing that is on there, the part where he puts at the end of that, and he said that, this was Alan, says, "I think the middle ground option would be to include the MOU between Carbon County and the courts, the MOU between Carbon County and DFCM as part of Exhibit A3. That way, these documents are part of the lease without trying to describe them in the lease." I think he doesn't want to have to include DFCM into the lease, but rather reference and include those different agreements that we have as an addendum to it.
I'm fine with that, but they didn't do that. They didn't include Exhibit 3. They didn't say where they would include that. I don't know that we need to say that they are bound by, I don't think they even need to state that they're bound by that other than, or bound by that agreement. But I think they ought to indicate that they have, they're aware of those. They've had a chance to meet with us. It, just the way it's written, it just sounds like, you know, "Tenants shall review and provide a written determination regarding the final plans and specifications." They have done that. They've had the opportunity to do that. I don't like them coming in now and say, having the right to come in at this point and say, this contract isn't, isn't what we've wanted. So I'm looking at 2.8.3, says tenants shall review and provide a written determination. So I don't know that, I think we can come to an agreement on this. I think they resist taking direction from us and I don't want to, I don't want to hit them on the head with a hammer on this. I just think there ought to be some recognition that, that the building has been designed and constructed the way they've wanted and that they have had a hand in the process.
In the, in the table of contents, is the, the part that I read through, the table of contents under the section 6, well, it's the page, the second page of it, where it has the exhibits. He did add in there to the exhibit, Exhibit A-3, the MOU with State of Utah Courts and Carbon County, the MOU between DFCM and Carbon County, the approved drawings for development, which are on file at DFCM, the approved change orders, and the certificate of occupancy, all as reference items in there, although those exhibits are not part of the wording that was provided here. It's.
And I think that's great. If we can find a way to refer to it and just indicate that we've, that construction has proceeded pursuant to these exhibits, you know, that's probably sufficient. But they, they haven't put that language in there. Courts, I worry about a court construing the contract and saying, you stuck this exhibit onto this contract. You didn't refer to it in the body of the contract. How am I supposed to know what the purpose of this is? That's what I worry about a judge saying. So I think they're almost there, but I think we need to get them to say why they've stuck that on there. And they almost, I, I'm not sure why they resist doing so. And it may just be an oversight on that part, but I'd like to go back to them with some language now that I see what their concern is and say, the parties agree that these documents have governed the construction of the building and they're attached here too as Exhibit A3.
Because 2.8.3 references A1 and A2, but A3 is not in the.
Right.
Body of it.
I tend to agree that we don't want to become liable for future tenant improvements when we had their input from the beginning.
I mean, this makes it sound like we're just starting construction, the way this is written. We shall obtain approval and required permits.
And we need to have.
We've got all those.
We need to have that acknowledged somewhere.
We're past that point. This has all been, it's been designed and built.
So basically, we need more time to provide other language that includes references to what's already been done?
Right.
What, what is your, your timeframe of when you think we could have something like that proposed to them and get their input on it?
Well, that, I can do it tomorrow. I mean, that's, that part's easy. I just want you to be aware of what I'm proposing, so I can get that out the door right away.
Well, that sounds amenable to me. How about you Commissioners?
I got some more changes I'd like to review with you for just a minute. So that, that was the first one there. They have, they having agreed that utility, snow removal, and janitorial services shall be considered to be part of the O and M of the lease premises. So I do appreciate that acknowledgement of that.
There was one concern on that about any vehicles that the Office of the Courts may have and snow plowing of the area. I think that's just more of a coordination effort that we identify areas of parking so that when we do plow, kind of like we do in our own facility here, we say during the winter, car, vehicles that are parked here must be parked in these areas. I don't know that that necessarily needs to be in the document, but maybe that's just something to think about.
Okay, sure.
So that way, we're not trying to plow around five different cars spread out throughout the parking lot. It's helpful if they're all in one area.
Right. I had had language in there that says the initial, under 4.1.5, if you look at Mr. Lunsford's changes, he says, "The initial O and M cost shall be ninety-three thirty-three for fiscal year 2018 and fifty-six thousand dollars for fiscal year 2019," set forth in Exhibit B1. "Prior to fiscal year 2022 and every three years thereafter, the party shall reset the O and M rate as needed to cover the accrual." You know, I just wanted it to make it clear that that Schedule B1 is subject to change every three years. He says, he says he thinks that's elsewhere and he just wants to refer to the schedule for the amounts for those years. I'm not exactly sure where it says elsewhere that we will, that we will reset that every three years. If it's, if it's in there somewhere else, that's fine, but I'm a little concerned about referring to the schedule if the, if, if it's not completely clear that that rate is going to change. As I looked at B3, as I recall the schedule, the schedule says, has the initial O and M cost and then it has it going through, staying the same all those years, fifty-six thousand, when in fact, we all agree that it's going to be reset every three years based on actual O and M costs. So if you were just to look at the schedule, the schedule itself, you would say, you would see, oh, this amount stays the same all that time. Somewhere in the body of the agreement, it needs to say, no, it, it might have that number in there as a placeholder for now, but really, that number's going to change every three years. So I think we need to insist that that, that language is clear somewhere.
And I believe he, he attempted to do that in 4.1.5 where it says landlord and tenant agree to review the building O and M cost every three years and reset the O and M rates as needed to cover the actual O and M costs of lease premises. That was one of his last changes that he just, that he put in. And that, I don't believe that section was part of the original lease.
Okay, well, that, that accomplishes what I was trying to do then. So I'd probably be fine with, with that then. And then he's got 4.1 saying utilities, janitorial, and snow. Okay, I'm probably fine with his change there then. I didn't realize he'd actually made that change. He did agree, they did agree that they'll be liable for damages caused by removal of any fixtures or personal property. They've agreed that at the time the certificate, they, they wanted it to say the, I changed something in 6.1.13, 6.1.13 about, oh, says landlord certifies that lease premises, it used to say is in compliance with all current codes and regulations. And I just changed it to say it will be in compliance at the time the certificate of occupancy is issued and they were good with that. We did, I wanted to add something that said, they, they have something that says if, if we're ever notified that we need to make changes due to the Americans with Disabilities Act, that the, that we would make such changes at our cost. I indicated that if they, if they make any such changes on their own initiative, then they would have to pay for those. They said no. They said no, the, the lease does not give the tenant the right to make modifications or improvements in any way that could take the building out of compliance with the code without the county's approval. So they, that might be okay. I just wanted it made clear though, that if, if they are, if they make any changes inside, they have to pay for those. Seems like that should.
They have to pay for those and get our approval.
Right. The ones they decide to make, they need to make those. I could see though, that if, if a change has to be made to comply with the ADA, then perhaps we should do those. But beyond, but changes that are not required by law, I think they should have to pay for. They had a funny provision in here that says the landlord will, shall comply with all state procurement requirements. I changed that to say, "With all state procurement requirements with respect to operation, maintenance, and improvements made to the lease premises." In other words, I don't want this provision to be, to be used against us to say that we have to follow the state's procurement code in everything that we do. They then clarify, well, this just says. They then clarify, well, this just says, if you have, they tried to say, "Well, the state procurement code says, if you have a county procurement code, then you're okay. So we're not going to change this." I'll think about making a change to that. I, I, I think they're just trying to do everything they can to avoid making a simple change. I don't see why we can't just say, "We will abide by our own procurement code with respect to the leased premises, and that our own procurement code satisfies the state code." I just don't want them to say, say, "We have to follow the state procurement code generally as a county." That's, that's my concern there. And maybe, maybe I'm thinking there, that, that language is too restrictive. Maybe it's not, but we'll look at that. Anyway, those are my main concerns with it, commissioners. Again, that section 2.8 is, is the main concern that I have. So I, I'd like to take a crack at giving them some more comments, and just seeing if we can't, can't especially fix the reference to how the building's being constructed.
In going through here, I, I can only find one reference to that Exhibit A, A dash three, and it's under the changes made to 2.7, 2.8.7 substantial completion. And that's the only place where it actually lists in the body of the lease that the new Exhibit A dash three, it says, "All improvements, remodeling, repairs required by Exhibit A dash three of the lease agreement have been entirely completed, except minor punch list items, and completion of which will not unreasonably interfere with the tenant's normal business operations as determined by the tenant."
So, and if, if that were the only part of 2.8, that, if we could take out their other stuff and leave something like that in 2.8, I'd be okay with that, but...
I, I just, that's the new section, and that's the only place that it's referenced that I can find, is under 2.8.7.
Thanks for that.
So they, they tried, maybe they need to try in another area as well, but...
Commissioners, I, I would move that we acknowledge those changes, those desired changes that need to be made, and that we instruct Christian to continue discussions with the state for that, and that it come back for possible ratification if, if everything...
Approval or ratification?
Well, do we want to just move forward and, and let it be approved if everything, all the changes that we've discussed today are accepted by the state? And then ratify it?
I, I think it would be nice if we could send them an approved version of it and say, "This has been approved, please approve it." Instead of coming back and saying, "We want these other changes before we approve it." It'd be easier if they could have one that says, "This has already been approved." And then they can just approve it, or they can come back and say, "No, make another change." Either way, it'll have to come back to the commission if they have additional changes, or they don't want to make the concessions that we're asking for.
With that in mind, I'll amend my motion to bring it back for possible approval.
Okay, Rita, will you put that on our next commissioners meeting? I'll go ahead and second that, my motion, in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, review and possible approval of a new, of new county technology policy. Barry Horsley.
Commissioners, we talked last year about bringing up some policies to help govern of, of how the county does some technology issues. This is a technology equipment disposal policy. Basically, it's to, if, if there were to be an issue with how the county disposes technology items such as sensitive data, the courts would look at what our policy says to how we handle such items. I'm not sure if you got the amended version that Christian had suggested some changes?
I don't know that I sent that to them, since it was mostly just grammatical or, you know, stylistic. My, my only change was that there ought to be a provision that also says, as you'll see by reading it, the proposal is that most of our equipment, if it, once we've removed sensitive data out of it, or the hard drives, it can then be sold. And I, I just thought we ought to have the flexibility to destroy any equipment that we deem necessary, even if we pulled out of the, pulled out the hard drive. Just as a safeguard, and just to, so that we, we can be completely confident that we're accomplishing everything the IT department thinks we need to accomplish when we get rid of old equipment.
I completely agree, and he, he made that a change in 4.2.1.
And that, that was my only substantive change, I believe, Barry. Don't you think that was the only one that's not a grammatical type change?
Yeah, the, the only other one was in 4.2.5. He allowed a provision, or he changed the provision in there, "In, in the event we decide to try to donate or dispose of it, according to environmental guidelines, there's a section in there that says, we, we first have to make an attempt to profit from it as well, to sell it on, on market."
I'll make a motion to approve that policy as far as the technology disposal goes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Barry. Item number eight, review and possible approval of a new interlocal agreement for southeastern Utah District Health Department.
Commissioners, I think we're still working on that at this point. We actually have a, a meeting tomorrow with some of the other commissioners from the other counties. I think it would be premature to review anything at this time. Christian?
We did get a draft this morning, late this morning, from Brady Bradford, and I wouldn't imagine that you've all had a chance to look at it yet, so...
I'll make a motion to table that.
I think that'd be appropriate. Second?
We have a motion, in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to set a date to bring that back?
Uh, sure, I, given that it's, I think we ought to look at it again next meeting.
Okay, Rita, will you put that on our next agenda as well?
Unless, unless you, you want more time.
So the fourth is our next meeting before the fourth Tuesday, it would be, right?
Pardon me?
I wonder if we ought to have it after our next health board meeting, which would be not the next meeting, but the one after?
So in April, the first meeting in April?
I think that would be, I think that would be best.
Whatever you, you think.
Let's do it in April.
Okay.
That way, we have all the information, I think, by then.
That'll be the April fourth meeting? Perfect. Thank you. Item number nine, findings, recommendations, and decision of Board of Equalization for special tax assessment area number 2015 dash one, Hilltop subdivision of Carbon County, Utah, and adoption of such findings, recommendations, and decisions by the Board of County Commissioners and related matters. Curtis Page is part of that Board of Equalization and here to address us.
Commissioners, before he starts, the Board of Equalization this time was made up of Kay Klosmo, Curtis Page, and myself.
So what I have is, I have a prepared statement from the board, so if I could read through that. It's, it's fairly lengthy, but it's very comprehensive, so bear with me as I read through this. Commissioners, this is a report to you and the public on the proceedings of the Special Board of Equalization, which sat last week, Wednesday through Friday, as required by state, by statute, and received public comments from individuals whose property is included in the special assessment area known as the Hill subdivision. The Board of Equalization consisted of myself, county engineer Curtis Page, county treasurer Kay Klosmo, and county commissioner Jay Potter. The Board of Equalization received objections to the proposed assessment from two property owners, and after hearing the arguments, the board met yesterday to weigh and consider those arguments and to make a decision. The Board of Equalization was required to meet pursuant to Utah Code Annotated Section eleven dash forty-two dash four zero three, for the purpose of eventually providing a report to the county commission that affirms that no parcel, or no parcel of property on the assessment list will bear more than its equitable portion of the actual costs that are, that are reasonable of the improvements benefiting the property. The Board of Equalization is authorized to make a corrected assessment list that withdraws parcels from the list, or that increases or decreases the assessment for individual property owners. Once the board has made a corrected assessment list, the county commission can then approve the board's findings and corrected assessment list. As you know, the assessment list consists of twenty-one separate parcels of property owned by seventeen different persons or families. This means some persons or families within the subdivision own more than one parcel of property. The proposal for the special assessment that the county received from the Hill subdivision homeowners association was that the assessment should be split equally between the number of owners of property in the subdivision, regardless of how many separate lots there, there are in the subdivision. In other words, the assessment was to be divided seventeen ways. Having heard arguments presented by those that attended the Board of Equalization hearings, this board has decided to recommend that the most equitable way, equitable way to make the assessment is to instead base the assessment on the number of lots, on the approved subdivision plaits that make up this subdivision. In other words, the assessment should be shared equally by each lot, rather than by owner. This board also finds that a provision should exist that any lot subdivided after this initial assessment will result in a recalculation and redistribution of funds, of funds owed based on the overall balance due at the date of approval of the subdivision and the new number of lots, so that any new assessment amount will be equalized between the new total number of lots. The board finds that the singular benefit that the Hill subdivision road provides to the subdivision is access to the lots situated within the subdivision. Therefore, it follows that each lot is benefited equally and that access is provided to each lot, regardless of size. One proposal that was brought forward in the hearings, and later considered by the board, was that the assessment should be calculated based on the overall percentage of the subdivision in acres owned by each property owner. This would imply that larger lots, or multiple lot owners, will receive a greater benefit from the road and should pay more, and that smaller lots will receive a lesser benefit from the road and should pay less. Again, however, the board felt that the most important benefit that the Hill subdivision road provides to this subdivision is access to the lots within the subdivision. Therefore, we felt that this would not be the most equitable way to divide the assessment, and ultimately, we decided that the assessment should be spread equally between each lot. Although lots zero two, or parcels, zero two dash zero six three seven and dash zero 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 five, and zero two dash zero six three seven dash zero 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 nine, do not have frontage access to the Hill subdivision road, this board considers their access to the Hill subdivision road to be in equal standing to all other lots that have frontage access. Access is provided to these two lots to the extent of the design of the subdivision, with the lot owner responsible to provide the remainder of access by private drive to develop these properties. This change, or excuse me, this will change the assessment from forty-one thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars per owner to thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per lot. For fifteen property owners, this will cause a decrease in their assessment by seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. But for two property owners, it will cause an increase because they own more than one lot. Those two property owners must now be given the opportunity to meet with the Board of Equalization and present any arguments that they may have as to why this assessment is inequitable, or should be changed in any manner. By statute, they must be given fifteen days' notice prior to the date of hearing. Alternatively, the property owners who will now be assessed at an increased amount may choose, if they wish, to simply waive their right to present their objections at the Board of Equalization, and may simply consent to the increased amount. If they choo, if they choose to do so, the Board of Equalization can immediately present its formal written report and an amended assessment list to the county commission and the commissioners for approval. Once the county commission has approved the corrected assessment list and a time period for appealing the corrected assessment list has expired, which is fifteen days, the county commissioners may then adopt an ordinance levying an assessment, and I can give Johansson and Tuttle to go ahead to finish the design and put the project out to bid. Again, commissioners, this is simply an interim report on our activities. There's nothing for you to approve today. We will contact the two property owners who have more than one lot in the subdivision and see if they'll be willing to sign a waiver and consent form so that the project may go ahead. If they are not willing to do so, we will schedule a hearing for them to present their arguments. This is our report.
Thank you, Christian. Where I was on that board, are there other questions? Or anything from Christian in regards to that?
None for me, no. I, I, I think, again, I think that it's clear that the decision that was made was done to satisfy the statute, and that statute says you're to find the most equitable way to make the assessment between all the, all the lots. And so assessing it by lot rather than by owner seems to be wholly compliant with the statute, and I don't see any problems with that or concerns with that. Again, this doesn't necessarily have to slow down the project if those two property owners who are affected by this are willing to go ahead and pay the increased assessment amount that they're going to have by virtue of their owning additional lots. But we'll contact them and see if they, if they object, then they, then the Board of Equalization has to continue to sit and hear out their, their complaints before final decision's made.
Thank you, Curtis.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I just should let you know that in preparing this report, Curtis and I have conferred and consulted with Eric Johnson, who's been our attorney on this matter, and he, he's the one who confirmed with me that it would be fine if these property owners wished to simply waive their objection and consent to it, and, and that would be, that would satisfy the statute as well.
Will we notify the HOA? I know we've got the landowner obligation, but do we have any obligation with HOA? A lot of work went into, you know, researching what this would look like, usable land, acreage, and also the fact that the proposal that they gave us originally was an exception to what is normally done when, when handling a special assessment area.
Curtis and I can work on making sure the HOA gets notice of this as well. We can send out an email to Neil and Gina, who've kind of headed up the group's efforts, and we can let them know what the decision is.
And again, just for public record, this is not an attempt to kill this project or to postpone it, but a way to find equitable assessment within a special assessment area.
Any further questions? Thank you. Item number ten, review and possible approval of a contract with Dave Smith. Commissioners, this is, Christian has done, again, a fabulous job preparing another contract. This is the agreement, we've already, if you remember last week, or last commission meeting, or the one before that, we had an agreement with UDOT for the pavement to construct the road and create a better intersection for what's now Robertson Lane. This will change the, where the intersection aligns. It'll put it more at the top of the hill and create a better line of sight for that intersection, as well as the intersection across, directly across from that. This is just simply moving forward now, now that we have a contract with UDOT. It would be contracting with the Smith family for the construction of that road, which would then create a new intersection. And it just simply lays out the construction standards that the county, if, if the county were to take over this road, it, it lays out what standards the, the county expects. Compaction, what types of materials, testing, and all of that, just so that way, when we take over the road, we're not taking over something that will be a problem in the future. Do you have any further?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I don't know that Dave Smith has seen this yet. I emailed it to him, but I doubt he's had a chance to look at it yet. Okay, I sent it to your email, because that was, that's the only email I had. Okay, uh, I sent it to your email, 'cause that was, that's the only email I have, so, um, I don't know that he's seen that. Uh, just so you know, Curtis Page and I did meet with Dave for a couple of hours on Monday morning to, uh, go over his concerns with it. A couple of things he wanted to make sure we're in there was that he had the right to, uh, build encroachments to the subdivision lots he intends to develop as well as to other property that he owns along this proposed road, uh, make sure there wouldn't be any restrictions in coming off of that new road. Uh, and of course, uh, so we included language that provides that that would be allowed. Uh, we, we conferred with him to see what distance would be safe to, to allow such encroachments off of the highway. Uh, that distance is in there of a hundred fifty feet, we felt like was the, uh, closest that we could allow encroachments to begin to happen. Uh, Dave's good with that number, and that's in there. Um, we talked about, uh, that there will have to be some public, um, some public utility easements given because of the fact that the irrigation ditch is going to be moved. Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, advised us he's going to use very high-quality, um, irrigation piping material to make that happen. Uh, we reviewed his plan to make sure that he's, you know, it's not going to have an elbow joint in it, but will S so as to prevent any kind of blockage in that irrigation pipe. Uh, he basically agreed to work with all the, the, uh, engineering concerns that Curtis had. So I think we're there. I think we've got an agreement. Just want you to know, he hasn't had a chance to look at it though, but we have conferred with him, and, and if he has concerns, I think we can probably resolve those, but I really think we're, it's, it's actually quite a simple agreement. He agreed to abide by whatever hydrology, um, uh, uh, construction needs to be made, whether that's a retention pond or a detention pond. He's already engaged engineers to do that, and they've done substantial work on that. And so, uh, it, that appears to be sorting itself out. So I really think we're going to be okay with that. Um, if there are substantial concerns, we'll bring that back to you, but, uh, I think, uh, unless, unless Mr. Smith ha- provides any kind of significant concerns, I would request that you allow that, uh, that you go ahead and sign that agreement.
Okay.
And I don't know if Kathy wants to say anything beyond that. I, I, I just, Kathy, I apologize that I didn't get that to you sooner. And I am sorry that Dave hasn't had a chance to look at that yet.
Well, he's still at work, so, but I looked at it before I came here, so.
I just didn't want you to think we're trying to pull a fast one on you. It's just, uh, last minute, so I apologize for that.
And Casey and I talked a little bit yesterday. Just because you sign it tonight doesn't mean we can't come back and make changes on our side and then come back again.
Sure.
For final signatures, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. So maybe we can make an approval pending your, uh, approval, and then if both parties agree to it, then we can sign it.
Everything that Christian mentioned, the hundred fifty foot setback, the utilities, everything, Dave told me about it too, so you concur with everything he talked to you and Curtis about Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll just look at it, and then maybe he could stop by if he has any questions or changes and talk to you.
Abs- absolutely. You bet.
Thank you.
I think just as another point of information, just for the public's rec- or information, is the county is not paying for the asphalt. We are simply a pass-through, UDOT, because of the cost savings of not elevating the other intersection and doing other, and, and cutting down and changing the whole road profile, they were able to save that money and then put it into the cost of pa- paving, um, the, the new road that will go through your subdivision. So we are simply a pass-through. Um, the county's participation is only to, uh, build the other side of the intersection on the, the other side of the road that, I, I'm not even sure the name of the road, uh, goes down to the Coke plant, um, down to the-
I can't remember.
Church Farms and different things. Anyways, we're just a pass-through, um, and, and this is a project by the developer and helped by the county to, to bring the money forward.
Well, we appreciate your participation at whatever level as well as UDOT's.
The other thing to remember is that, uh, and Curtis Page is the one who pointed this out to me, is that, uh, um, UDOT will probably be looking at this agreement and will be very interested to see the standards to which we required compaction and, and to the way this, this, uh, thing was developed and designed, hence the somewhat detailed agreement, because we want to make UDOT happy. If, if we don't make them happy with our agreement, they, they can always back out and say, you know, we're not going forward with the project. So, uh, n- none of the requirements are intended to be onerous, but we do want to make sure UDOT's going to be happy with what we're doing.
So will they see this contract that's between us?
I believe they'll ask for it at some point.
Mike, I told you yesterday, Mike Miles, I talked to him, and he was supposed to be in town today and tomorrow, and I thought he said they were going to look at that project, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you know that or not, if you-
I appreciate knowing that. I, I wasn't aware of that, but if, uh, I'll let Curtis know that we may be getting a call from him, and we'll let him know.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions, commissioners?
I don't have any. So I, I'll make a motion to approve it and, subject to the approval of the Smiths reviewing it and approving their side.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number eleven, consideration of possible approval of offer from UDOT on property located at approximately eight, eighteen fifty South, Highway ten, and Price. Commissioners, again, this is part of that, uh, Highway ten widening project. They've sent some documentation on how this process has worked, uh, and, and they've sent us a, uh, an, uh-
A proposal as well.
A proposal, basically, on, on how much they would pay for the property that we own along the right-of-way that they are going to develop into Highway ten as they widen it.
And commissioners, I've looked at that proposal in the terms of the, uh, the quitclaim deed they, they want from us as well as the temporary easement they want for, uh, construction purposes, uh, as well as the contract. I don't have concerns with the terms of those. Uh, I think the question for you is to decide whether or not the compensation is sufficient, and if you have any questions regarding the compensation, I think that's, that's where I haven't, uh, I haven't really studied that to see if, if that's a concern. Wasn't really aware to what extent this is really more a collaborative effort rather than an outright eminent domain issue, so, um, you, I think that's more of an issue for you to decide as far as the, the compensation amount.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the amounts that they've offered?
And that, that amount was nine hundred dollars, as, as far as I recall, and they, I think the contract had a square footage amount in there.
It's a hundred, a hundred and thirty-six square feet in one of the parcels and a thousand forty-five square feet in the other one. The offering unit price is three dollars per square.
And if, if we need more expertise on that, maybe we could ask, uh, Curtis or Daniel to kind of give us some guidance on that. I just, I couldn't tell you whether that's a fair price or ballpark, or I, I just, I haven't spent time on that and don't know off the top of my head.
Or even our assessor's office might-
Sure.
Be able to pinpoint that. But I, I don't know that it's out of line personally. I mean, what other use would this property have besides?
That, that's the thing, is it may be that your, your interest is more in seeing this project take place and seeing this get built than receiving some compensation.
I would think under condemnation that it would, wouldn't go for any more than that. The type of property it is, the, the fill, everything that it'll take to bring the road into that, um, I just don't know that it would bring any more.
Sure.
I don't know if Curtis is still there, if you have an opinion on unit price. Just giving us the thumbs up.
Commissioners, I'm fine with it. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number twelve, update on NACO Steering Committee on Economic Development and Workforce Services. Jake, welcome back.
Hey, thanks. So I, uh, went to bed at midnight and got up at two, so I could be here today. We, this past week, had the legislative conference in Washington DC where a lot of the, uh, members of the Utah Association of Counties met with other association of counties from other states, um, for the national association meeting there in DC. And, uh, the, the purpose why UAC, uh, requested me specifically to go was because they wanted me to serve on this Steering Committee for Economic Development and Workforce Services. It was an honor and a privilege to accept and to attend. One of the biggest take-backs from that meeting is some very timely information on these opportunity zones that we've received some data on from the Association of Local Governments. These opportunity zones have been, um, i- it's, it's a federal program that benefits private investors who otherwise would have to pay capital gains tax to have that capital gains tax deferred for ten years, um, when it meets with some type of economic development opportunity. And, uh, to benefit from that, governors of each state have had to designate tracts, tracts of land, and there's certain requirements for which they, they qualify or they don't qualify. And then, uh, our specific governor, each governor is doing it a little bit differently, but our specific governor has, um, delegated through the Association of Local Governments to go out through, throughout their counties and help align and ensure that those tracts also fit with other incentive programs that we might have locally or statewide with, uh, community development areas, with, um, just other, other future projects that we have in mind for development in our county. And, um, we need to, and, and this is very last minute, um, what would be the best-case scenario is if they would give us more time, but we need to identify any and all of those businesses within our county that may in the future have growth, want to expand, or areas within our community, if they're not already in a CDA, that may be an opportunity or considered an opportunity zone, and ensure that those fall within an existing track that the governor has already established. If he hasn't, i- i- if it's outside of that, then we need to negotiate with them. And the state is, is supposed to submit all of their information on the twenty-first of this month, um, which means that the counties need to get all that work done well before then. And I have a meeting with, uh, with Jerry Gam- Gamber, the director of the Association of Local Governments on Monday to review what we have, and, uh, between now and then, I, I could definitely use some help identifying employers and, um, other opportunities, make sure that we have all their community development areas, and, uh, just on a map with addresses, with parcel numbers, make sure that all of that fits in the existing tracts. You can go on their website and find out where these tracts are based on each state and each county. It is somewhat updated, um, and, uh, that, that's what we need to be cross-checking and analyzing. And it's kind of a rush because, you know, this is, this is an incentive for, for private investors who would otherwise be burdened with, uh, capital gains tax, that they could use that money that they would have otherwise spent in capital gains, um, to invest in local businesses. It's almost a, a tax shelter of sorts, but not necessarily a shelter, but a, a deferral for up to ten years. Um, there is not any additional programs, meaning i- it's a deferral for ten years, but that doesn't mean that it'll exist ten years from now to roll over or do anything like that. This is kind of a one-time program that what we establish now, people can be investing in as time goes on, but at the end of ten years, then it, you know, we don't know what will exist at that time. And, uh, we were actually able to sit down and listen to the, uh, the, the senators who put this thing together and, uh, hear about their, their optimism and, and how they feel that this for rural and economically challenged communities could be the most impactful thing that we've had yet. So that was very exciting. Um, while I was there, we also received some local news from here in the state. Ginger Chin sent me a message, and maybe you guys have received it already, but the carbon fiber appropriation for five hundred thousand was approved. So that's, that's very exciting, and that project as well could and should, um, fall into one of these tracts for an opportunity zone. There was really so much information, so many meetings and sessions that we attended, public lands, we've got, uh, Leland Pollock, who is just champion public lands at the state. In fact, we had a, uh, a, a testifying training meeting where some of the congressional staff members showed us videos of what to do and what not to do when testifying before Congress. And, uh, Leland was, was one of the good examples, and so that was very in- instructive. And Commissioner Hopes, I have this book for you, which is The President's Initiative for Rebuilding Infrastructure in America. And so that, um, talks a little bit about the president's intentions. I don't know that it really speaks to how it will be funded, but, um, it's, it's very, I don't know, it kind of gives us hope that a lot of the infrastructure issues, um, will be given attention in the ongoing future, and we had some representatives speak to that as well. In, in some of our, I, I just have a lot of resources that I'll share with you guys later. Um, as far as the, uh, Community Economic Workforce Development Steering Committee that I sat in on, they spoke a lot about the, uh, oh, the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grants, and how they help economic development in small communities. And a lot of the CDBG money goes towards some of the infrastructure necessities, upgrading some small towns with their sewer systems, water systems, important things that they wouldn't be able to do on their own, um, and, uh, the, the important role that the Association of Local Governments, which usually take on that, um, role, not in every county, but in most counties, um, and the coordination and, and efforts of the counties aligning with what is being done with CDBG and, uh, making sure that we are communicating with the Association of Local Governments and identifying those needs that we have for economic development, for making sure that infrastructure in some of our less advantaged, um, towns or subdivisions are, are being taken care of. They also spoke about the veterans and how there are over forty thousand homeless veterans nationally, and just a variety of different programs that they have. With that, I'd like to highlight, uh, a new veterans program that we'll be instituting here in the county and across the state. It is called the Vet Tech Program, and it's being administered by a educational institution called Bottega and accredited through UVU. The facilitators of this program will be, um, the same group that's moving into the Excel, or the, uh, JCPenney Building. This Vet Tech Program will, they, they've partnered with big companies like Symantec and Dell and, uh, some other big tech companies to train and, and help people get associate degrees that are a little bit tweaked and different, that have to do with fraud, have to do with technology, and, uh, have to do with finances. And, um, kind of a combined new degree program certificate, whatever you want to call it, it'll become stackable. They can get their original associates or whatever and move on to more advanced training, and, uh, it, they'll be receiving exactly what these, uh, these, these tech companies are looking for a- as far as anti-fraud and, and finances and, and IT. And, uh, they're specifically going to target veterans. They will, will be looking for specifically twelve veterans in our area. They will screen probably forty-eight veterans to find those twelve, um, that would qualify. And there has been a private donor who has put up over, over two-point-two million dollars to help, help get over a hundred of these veterans across the state of Utah involved, and, uh, it'll be first piloted here in Carbon County. So, you know, ideally, we can help a little bit with that forty thousand homeless number with veterans nationally. You know, there were so many good things from public lands to, um, how to communicate with the public and, uh, everything else. I found it a, uh, it was my first and only, uh, E- uh, NACO, National Association of Counties meeting, and, um, felt like it was very beneficial, and I, I think that maybe we should consider and relook at our traveling budget so that maybe one of us could at least attend going forward in the future every year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number thirteen, presentation of a program and request for a letter of endorsement from the- Item number thirteen, presentation of a program and request for a letter of endorsement from the, excuse me, Musania?
Musania, yes.
Musania, Art Center to apply for grants. Stephen Kiefer.
Thank you. First of all, Commissioners, thank you for the time. Rita, also thank you for helping make this happen. And Seth, for making accommodations for my poor back and my electronics. I, I would like to, first of all, tell you that my mother was born in Price. So I'm kind of a reverse import in a way, meaning, meaning I'm coming home to, to, to some extent. I was raised in, well, all over the country, but mainly in North Sevier. I went to North Sevier High School, graduated in nineteen something. And after that, I went to Japan where I lived most of my life. After returning from Japan, I discovered that, that I had a real knack for business and, and other things. For a short brag, I was the first non-Japanese executive ever hired by Japanese global Fortune 500. And I ran HR, OD, and education for Sanyo Electric. And upon return, I got involved with my wife's work, which is primarily art. I then came, my mother died four years ago. And I had property in Central Utah, and we decided that we were going to do something with it. And what we decided to do was turn it into a nonprofit. Musania, I don't know if you folks know that mountain name. The locals call it Mary's Nipple, which we prefer not to use in public. And so we named it Musania, which is its Ute name and officially named after word meaning white top mountain. Our purpose is to leverage art and the creative industries for economic and community development. That is our charge. We have specifically looked at, we were originally looking at the six counties associations of government, six counties. We were asked by the State of Utah's Art and History People to include Beaver County. And recently, our Board of Directors has questioned whether or not we should include both Carbon and Emery Counties since there, you are within driving distance for some of our, our services. And so what I did first before coming here was a couple of weeks ago, come out and spend a few days here. Spoke with the superintendents of both county schools, districts, to see if they would be interested in the applicable programs, and they did indicate that they would be. So we're now trying to see what you think and whether or not it would be appropriate for the county to endorse the program. The endorsement does not require any financial obligation, does not have any financial obligation. Nor does it create anything in the future. But it would only be used to help us procure grants from various foundations and government programs. I, I'd like to draw your attention to the screen. Some of you may be able to understand that we don't even need to say that Utah is a beautiful place to be. And we, we have great people, and there's a lot of resources here that are unmatched by any state in the country. I feel proud that I was the small part of the rebranding of Sevier County into Trail Countries three years ago. That's their new brand. And I, I am very happy to say that in two thousand and fifteen, the State of Utah was voted the most tourist-worthy location in the, in the world. And I think that that is partly due to our life elevated theme as well as all of the efforts of the local counties in making that happen. But in reality, Utah is two county, two states. We have six urban areas, counties, that are relatively self-sufficient in, in terms of their tax revenues. And then we have Central Utah, which is essentially another state. And, and what that means is the statistics that are up there, we have thirty percent of the state in terms of geography. We have three point seven percent of the population, three point seven percent of the population. And the, the way that money and tax revenue is equalized across the state does not always get to where it needs to go. And tends to go to the high priority items and areas. And of course, a lot of us are not truly aware of the impact of creative industries. And let me define that for a moment. It includes the art, it includes recreation, it includes historical and cultural assets. And some outdoor activities such, such as parks and, and related things. In Utah, in those six counties, excuse me, the six urban counties, are free and reduced. In Central Utah, that figure is fifty-one percent and seventy-one percent respectively. It's kind of bleak in some areas, but it gets even bleaker in some. We've got one area that has improved, and that is the hunger rates. And our hunger rate went from five, five in one, one in five in the whole state to one in seven point five. And that means that there are children out there who only eat one meal a day on average. And that's what those rates come from. In Central Utah, we did make some improvement. We went from one in five to one in five point five. But we're still lagging behind the rest of the state. And the obvious point is the economic opportunities, the, the nature of what jobs are available are, are different from, from what we have. And if you look at both Bureau of Labor Statistics and Utah Statistics, the, the jobless rate and the amount of jobs and the amount of people in the workforce, those numbers simply do not jive. And we have done a deep dive on those. We've gone to the state and, and, and it's even bleaker than you think. The unemployment rate, which was announced last week at three point one percent, makes Utah look very good. And ours at four point four percent on average. But in reality, our region's adjusted rate is twenty-two point eight percent. And that's shocking. And we have done the deep dive on that. One of the most shocking things for me was the mental illness factor. The United States by, according to the WHO, is the most mentally ill state, I mean, country in the world. At nearly twenty-seven percent of our population, who has been diagnosed with mental illness. In Utah, is the number one in the United States. The United States say that we are at twenty-three point eight percent. Utah is about that, but we are slightly higher than anyone else. And, and in Central Utah, we have a twenty-eight point eight percent. And that's nearly one in three people who have a, a need to, to have some assistance with mental illness. And we mentioned veterans, and that is one of the things that, that is going on there as well. We have a terrible college-going rate. The state claims to have fifty-eight percent. But more recent statistics show that we are number two from the bottom, next to Idaho, with fifty, forty-five point three percent. And our region is only slightly under twenty-five percent go to college at all. Those statistics mean that we have to do something. The solutions are complicated. And there are all kinds of different factors that prevent us from working together in order to, to solve them. So we believed, and we means a group of, and I'm not going to bore you with the facilities, but a, a group of us artists and educators who believe that the arts make us smarter, that the arts make a better community, and that the arts and related creative industries are great economic drivers. And a case in point is a gentleman's project in, and I'll name him, his name is Todd Christensen. Sounds like someone who's from Utah, but he's actually in Virginia. And he was hired by the Governor of Virginia in two thousand and two, had the state's Economic and Community Development Program. And he was specifically charged with fixing the economic situation between Roanoke and the, the western part of the state, which was nineteen counties, which had lost forty thousand jobs over a period of thirty years. And at the time he was hired, he instituted three different programs. And as a result of those, in one year alone, in two thousand and thirteen, the, the jobs grew from six hundred, by the way, I should back up, six hundred, in two thousand and twelve. The statistics in that area, because directly related to, to the arts, there were nine thousand six hundred jobs created, almost all of them related to the arts. And the revenue that was lost from the lost forty thousand jobs was replaced by those ninety-six hundred jobs. Think about that for a moment. And, and the, the answer, of course, is subsidies and, and tax benefits that were given to dying industries. But these industries are thriving. And in, in the two thousand and twelve, statistics showed that they had in arts-related sales in those nineteen counties of six hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. The following year, in two thousand and thirteen, that changed to nine hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. It's a huge increase, way more than they had invested as a state or as a region to improve the, the, the programs. So now, we can't replicate everything. We do not have a legislative backing. And I'm going to skip straight to the programs. But the essentials of it are to provide a, I'm sorry for the, we, we were actually looking at two sites. And what we've come up with in order to reach all these programs is a K-212 outreach program. This is the one that, that the school superintendents are interested in. This is essentially, we send a bus. We don't have a bus. It's actually a motorhome that's been modified to be a museum so that the museum comes to the students rather than one museum having to attract everyone. That's much more cost efficient. The second part is we allow students to come to us and use our facilities free or just for the cost of doing the kilning. We have partnered with every university in the state of Utah, including, I have to say, I'm not used to saying USU Eastern yet. So forgive me, I, I was here before when I was in high school. But including that school, they are on our board. We, we will have a second program specifically to support the other programs. And that's an artist and residency program. Artists and residents are extremely important for educators. Without them, they cannot become an art teacher. It's that simple. And, and without a BFA or an MFA, there cannot be a teacher of ceramic arts. The problem with ceramic arts is they're very, 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 very expensive. The kilns are expensive, the wheels are expensive, the materials are relatively cheap, but everything else is expensive. So what we have done is we decided to bring people here from around the country. The long-term residents will be required to help assist with the other programs. And fifty percent of their time will be, will be to, for their own purposes. The other short-termers are coming here to be, to, to either get their accreditation or work through a teacher's licensing program. We, we, because of our, our five oh one C three, we are also a five oh nine A two. We are allowed to own and operate for-profit entities and use that for up to one-third of our, our income. And because of that, we have chose to make a vocational education program as part of our program. And those are specifically to incubate small businesses that are related to, to arts and culture and business in the region. We have an art therapy program, which will be free for veterans. And also free for court-appointed K through twelve students. The other one is creative assets, which might be of interest to you. Everyone that is officially in our region will have access to our interns, which wants to get in from our, our university partners. Those interns will push out every creative asset in the, in the area. And make this as a major destination for tourism. Not just the Big Five, but everything that we have, because people want to see more than just the Big Five. And our last item that we do is we operate an Artists Against Hunger Program, which we started actually in Ohio and are continuing on in Oklahoma, where we are currently living. And the Artists Against Hunger Program is essentially artists donate empty bowls, the bowls get sold. We get local restaurants to donate food. People who are hungry can come and eat for free. Those people who can afford to buy the bowls, buy the bowls. And a hundred percent of the donations from the bowls go to backpack programs, feed, and feeding programs that exist, including Feeding Utah and Feed America. All the programs will, however, be local. And what we're asking from you is a, we, we need really two things. One is, one is the letter of endorsement, which we specifically requested. But we're also offering a, we'd like to have a representative, either from one of the council people or an appointed person, who would represent us, or represent you on our advisory board. And the purpose of that is to keep the communication flowing so that anything we do, you can be aware of quickly. And vice versa, if there is anything that, that we should be aware of, that would impact what we are doing for you, we would also be aware of. There is no voting, there's no meeting requirements. It's just be a channel for communication. And that is my presentation. And I respectfully request a letter of endorsement. And if you need a, a template, we do have one. And I'd like to see if there's any questions.
Do you have facilities already in Utah?
We have land in, I have land in Central Utah that I'm going to donate.
Okay.
Just under an acre. Bill, our first, and I did go through the, it is in the slides. The, the land that we have to build from scratch, the cost of doing so is about nine hundred thousand dollars. It's not insurmountable, but my wife won an award recently, and she's actually going to go pick it up this weekend. Well, next weekend. She's going to Pittsburgh to receive it. It's a very prestigious award, and that specifically pays for one of the kilns. And so we, we're looking for a place to build that. Our other alternative is in Gunnison, so if Gunnison takes it, we'll, we'll pair off the, the Horticultural Programs, which were one of the incubating programs that we've outlined. And put that in the Redmond Facilities and then put all of the artist residency stuff up in Gunnison at this point. We, we are open to other suggestions, but equidistant from all the universities is kind of important. And that's a pretty good location for, for that reason.
Now, we, we actually have a Meals in Backpack program here.
I'm, I am aware of it, thank you.
Very good.
And that would mean that we would conscript all of our USU Eastern students into making bowls. And they would run their own Artists Against Hunger Program. And all of their efforts would be there to support that program.
And we've been considering doing similar to Cache County. You mentioned the K through twelve court-ordered classes that would be free or whatever.
Yes, they are, they're actually art therapy.
We're, we're considering a, a plea abatement arrangement for educational courses in, in conjunction with the other options of like drug court or jail time or whatever. And so we're not quite there yet, but we're moving in that direction. So this would add to the menu of what we could offer.
I, I agree with you. I, I don't know what our board will agree to in terms of actual, you know, content of, of what is given in terms of education. We, we, we have our, our areas of expertise, which is primarily in ceramics and in sculpture. And of course, with art therapy, clay has been proven to be the number one method of getting rid of PTSD, other childhood traumas. As a play therapy, it's also highly rated. It's highly also underused because it's so expensive to, to have the facilities, to have full range, other than just playing in clay. And if there isn't a, a method for the, the people under, in therapy to actually take it to fruition, it won't do any good. So having the kilns and studios and everything else they would need is really, really critical. And, and certainly, I think that the board would entertain o- other classes of students who maybe need it and that diversion. But I can't speak for the board. I'm just the Executive Director.
So how would individuals in our area be able to use the facilities that are elsewhere?
Well, in terms of each program, speaking with the, the superintendents and/or program curriculum directors, what they would say, they would identify the most highly talented students to send to us. And those that, that of course are responsible enough to do that. It is quite a distance from, whether you go to Gunnison or Redmond, it's still almost two hours. So in closer schools, they're able to come in, buzz in thirty students at a time every day if they want to. And as long as they schedule it, and we can, that's the, the goal. In terms of the creative assets promotion, how many of you are familiar with, with Fruit of Colorado? That's where my father was born and the home of Mike the Headless Chicken. And I went there and they, they agreed to promote Central Utah if we promote them as well. And, and that's probably because they liked my name and they contributed, my ancestors contributed so much to that. We've also worked out reciprocity agreements with Great Basin National Park, National Heritage Area. And, and we will be doing a kiosk over there. So number five, we will have strategically placed kiosks at rest areas throughout the region. I'm talking about the Intermountain Region. And so that, that means that, that the, as a county or municipalities could come in and give us the information that they want it promoted, we put it on either for a blanket cost or no cost. We haven't decided on that yet. It all depends upon program, program funding. Those are the two main areas, I believe. The educational program's an obvious one because there's, in, in Price, you have, you do have a, a teacher who does focus on ceramics, which is very good, but there's no real outlet for them. And, and the university is rebuilding that program as we speak. I think, I believe this is his first full year here as a full-time ceramics teacher. So it was caught. So it was caught when USU took over, so.
Any further questions?
The motorhome.
Yes.
Obviously, the kilns and other things won't be in the motorhome. What, what exactly will be offered to that service?
May I switch screens? I didn't plan to present this, but I can. So we have, the, the idea of it, and if we can go to, you know, this is the wrong direction for a presentation, but this is one sample of a, a motorhome up there. And basically, we got it and we would have it fixed with, with specialized displays, the bottom of which are coffins, if for no, for lack of a better word, but protective drawers so that when they're in transit, they don't get damaged. Artifacts that would then be pulled out along with a tent and other equipment so that the, the, the artists and residents who will be driving that equipment will, will be able to take it out, do demonstrations and have some of the students come through and see this kind of work. These are our actual, let me go to here. I don't know if it's better or a bit worse from putting in slideshow presentation, but these are Utah artists and there are two pages of them. And there are actually a few more that we've discovered since making this document. But I, I believe forty-two of the Utah artists have agreed to give us their ceramic work or loan it to us. In addition to that, this next page, these are international and other national artists. And these people, and these people have all agreed to give to us. And so these are not the actual doc, the items, but this is a representation of it. This is an actual item, so is this. This piece and this piece are made by the same person. This is six feet tall, this costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you wanted to purchase it. Then that, that will be on the bus. This, this is fifty thousand dollars, that's thirty thousand dollars, that's thirty thousand dollars. And these are already, have been promised to us. We don't have them physically, all of them. We do have some. But right now, we have more than one million dollars worth of, of art ready to go on the bus as soon as we can get it on. In addition to that, we're also, we have connections in the glass. These are the first two glass artists ever in the United States. And you know this person, even though you may not know him. He is the person who started the Corningware. He was the vice president of Corningware as well as Toledo Glass. And his hobby was ceramics and then he got interested in glass. And his best friend Harvey Littleton got together and they made the very first glass studio. And they ran a workshop in which famous people like Fritz and Chihuli became their students. And Dominic Labino is this person's name. And he had one student, not really a student, an apprentice, who he taught how to do his work his way and make glass, which is from scratch rather than beads and other things. And these are some third and fourth generation. We will get this piece, this is about ten thousand dollars. We will get one simi, that's, it's a quarter of a million dollars. And that's because our, the, the owner of those is our good friend who took over the Labino Studios in Ohio. I, I would challenge to ask anybody if they can identify what that is. This is actually the, a modern version of the space shuttle tiles that you might have heard about. Well, Dominic Labino is the person who made the very first one. We have that as well. We will have models of a, a, this is of course not, we can't have a real jet engine in, in the bus. But the jet engine is eighty percent ceramic parts and that's because it's the only thing that can take the heat. And so the students who are interested in art, there will be students interested in industry. There's medical, there's other technical, there's automotive, there's aerospace, and there's construction, sensible things like bricks and tiles, which we intend to incubate as well. So that's, I hope that answers your question. And most of these artifacts, we already have.
Yes, I think it was important to identify the benefit to our community, which would primarily be the bus that's coming here and some of those courses if they can be outsourced here too.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that reminder and allowing you to be put in the record, thank you.
Is there a...
Commissioners, I'm okay with writing a, a letter of recommendation and I'd make that motion.
A motion.
I don't know if we need a motion on this one or not. I'll ask Christian on that. I'd like to see more detail as far as the, particularly our local school district, its buy-in in the process and also a more detailed financial analysis of really where the monies are coming from and where they will be spent. The information given to us was, you know, given at short notice and we're glad that you could come and do that. But there are a lot of questions that I would pursue before. I would want to, you know, just give a letter of endorsement.
I can...
I, just, just as soon. I, I, I think if you do do a letter of endorsement, you ought to make a motion to, to make that letter or approving, approving that endorsement. So I think a motion would be appropriate if you decide to go that way, whether that's tonight or later.
And my understanding is that you're not asking for any financial commitment on our behalf, just a letter of support.
That is correct. As I think I mentioned, we do have the possibility of having a blanket thing for promotion, the regional economic promotion.
Which would be optional.
I'm sorry?
Which would be optional.
Yes, it's completely optional. That, that, I, I know that when we set it up for Ohio, that there were different pay, there were rates.
Or scales for, depending upon the size of the county, whether it was a, you know, independently wealthy county, et cetera. And I think the highest one was a dollar per capita, per, per year. And that was Toledo and they were also in that area. And so to be honest with you, my inclination is no charge for public entities.
Are you a 501(c)(3) resident?
Yes, and a 509, 509(a)(2) as well. And if you'd like, I can send you the list of board, our board of directors and these documents you already have. And that way you can have more information to make your judgment on.
So is there a cost to the schools or any other cost?
There, there, for the schools, I, I, and there is. There is a mileage charge based upon how far a school is and, and a small per diem to cover the lunch for the, the drivers and that's it. And that, by the way, the per diem is based upon, and the mileage is based upon nonprofit rate of point one eight rather than the government rate of point five, 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 I believe, five, six.
Commissioner Potter, are those the financials that you were had in question as those costs?
I just don't see a lot of great detail as far as really what we're supporting. I think before the county lends its name to any project, it ought to have more than just, you know, a twenty-minute presentation on that, especially where it is not directly in our area and especially where it benefits the schools. For me, I would like to have the schools endorse it and then consider whether, you know, the county should really be doing that or other, other members of the community.
Thank you. I, and if there are any specific hesitation, I'd like to know as well.
No specific hesitation, but it is a matter of, it's a public, you know, issue as far as that goes. And again, I, I don't think that, you know, we want to put our endorsement behind something we don't fully understand or fully know or fully understand what those benefits are. You've got a university that's involved in it on this level. You've got at least one, if not Emory County School Districts that you're talking to. And so I think that those things need to be considered by this commission before those things happen. That's just my, my opinion.
I understand. So I just wanted to let you know who I spoke with. Mrs. Maynard, I believe she's in charge of the direct, the curriculum for Carbon County. This is the one I spoke to. And then I spoke to both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent in Emory Counties, if that helps you.
Okay. I was just gonna say that Commissioner Potter brings up a good point. That it would almost be a better ask if the school districts and the college asked us to support with a letter of endorsement because they are fully vested in and encouraging us to do so.
And, and that will be done. It's just, there are a lot of people and places to see.
Yes.
Scheduling is very difficult in this large area, so that, that, but that is underway.
Okay. So I know you were going to make a motion, Commissioner, and...
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and amend my motion that we wait to receive more information, that we, that we ask that you reach out to the schools so that they can contact us and let us know how they feel about it so that we can bring it back for a later decision.
Okay, I'll do that.
That I can second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number fourteen, closed session to discuss the character and professional competency of an individual in pending or reasonably imminent litigation. We have a, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pete, did you want to grab those signatures right now?
I'll be in the University of San Diego. Yourself?
No, I think it's good.
That's what I actually went. I was accepted, I didn't go in. Had a better off.
All right. You're back.
Are you going to make a motion?
Aye, aye.
Sure.
As soon as Casey sits down, we're back.
Do we have to reconvene?
Back. Yes, we do.
Motion to reconvene.
Do we need to go out of closed session first?
I did that.
Oh. Did you second it? All in favor, aye?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Go ahead and make a motion that we, uh...
Re- reconvene.
Oh, that we reconvene?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, concerning the first item of discussion in our closed session, I will go ahead and make a recommendation that we, allow Christian to offer the settlement of $4,000 that he originally offered, and continue forward with that.
We have a motion?
Aye, I second that.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.